Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular committee meeting of the whole for February the 3rd of 2025. I would look for a mover and a seconder to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Moved by Councillor Kressman, seconded by Councillor Sodou, all those in favor. And that carries unanimously. I will turn it over to Councillor Martin for our territorial acknowledgement.
We've gathered in Woma Township on the traditional territory of the Neutral, Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, and Mississauga peoples. We also want to acknowledge the importance of the Dish with One Spoon Covenant, a peace agreement made between Indigenous nations before the Europeans arrived. It characterizes our collective responsibility to each other and Mother Earth. We should take only what we need, leave enough for others, and keep the dish clean. By acknowledging this covenant and the First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples, we are reminded of our important connection to this land where we live, learn, and work together as a community.
Thank you very much, councillor. There are no additions to the agenda this evening, so I would have a mover and a seconder for adoption of the agenda. Moved by Councillor Martin, seconded by Councillor Kressman, all those in favor. That carries unanimously. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest this evening, councillors? Okay, seeing none. We have no delegations this evening, as well as no correspondence. We do have one item on the consent agenda. Would anybody like to remove that item, Councillor Kressman?
Yes, I had a conversation with Clerk Boss before, but I think it's worthwhile to add, in terms of the conversation, is that it... We have two more additions. It's in the drainage area, as I understand, of the one drain that is being upgraded. And so I guess, is there a time that you can't add any more area to it, or if it's in the area of the principal drains, that it can be added at any time?
Thank you, Mayor Salanen. Councillor Kressman, for this drain petition, the engineer report is not completed yet, and these owners worked with the drainage engineer. So there's actually a cost savings to having this petition filed under an existing one, rather than being dealt with as a separate new drainage petition.
And as a follow-up, if the request came in after the report was completed, then it would have to go to a whole new request, is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Salanen, and to Councillor Kressman, you're correct.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the vote. May I have a mover and a seconder? Before I do that, please, moved by Councillor Kressman, seconded by Councillors Sodou, all those in favor. And that carries unanimously. Onto our reports this evening. The first one is CAO Recruitment RFP, and I will call on our acting Chief Administrative Officer and Director of Corporate Services, Greg Clark, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this report provides the background and outline of the RFP as directed by council back in December when we brought forward the options for recruiting a new CAO. So this is the first step in that process, and the goal of this is to get the RFP out on the street and get eligible vendors that are in this sphere to bid on the work, and then bring that back to council for approval. So today, what you have is the outline of the actual RFP itself. Attached to that is the job description as it exists, a brief outline of what we're looking for in terms of recruitment strategy, an evaluation of the candidate, and what we're looking for the consultant or the vendor to do for us, as well as how we would evaluate the applicants. One thing I do want to make clear about this is that this is the existing job description, and it's just a starting point for reference for whoever does bid on this, that they understand where we're starting from. But the expectation is that whoever we bring in would work with council to start from the very beginning of updating the job description, ideal candidate identification, all those types of things, all the way through the recruitment process, interview, and hiring. So the idea is that they would take care of all of those processes within the HR realm of bringing on a new CAO.
Thank you very much. So councillors, right now, the recommendation is left open-ended for us to choose closing dates. Generally speaking, they're about three weeks is what the RFPs are, so that would bring us, if council goes ahead with this and then approves it at our next council meeting, to March 18th for the RFP closing. I would suggest just putting in the date of March 18th and then moving, getting a mover and a seconder, so that we can then discuss the item, see if there's amendments or anything that others want to make. So do we have a mover and a seconder to both receive this report and that the RFP for 2025-03 is attachment one, be issued with a closing date of March the 18th of 2025? Moved by Councillor Martin, seconded by Councillor Dunstall. And I will now open up the floor for questions and comments. Councillor Kressman?
Through you, Mayor, to Acting CAO Clark. Is it normal for the consultant to work on the CEO job description externally, or I guess that he would be doing it partially with council, et cetera? Or is it ever done internally with HR of the township?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the councillor. For this particular role in that it reports directly to council, and so therefore council is, in effect, the boss of this individual, I think it makes the most sense that council be involved. And if we're bringing in a consultant to do the hiring process externally, it makes sense that that continuity is there, that they're helping you and assisting you in developing that job description. From an HR perspective, we're here to help and facilitate, and so if there's things that you want us to look into, and in terms of alignment with the township practices and those things, obviously, we will be supporting with that. But I do think it makes the most sense to align with the external consultant, supporting council in that endeavor.
Councillor Kressman?
Just as a follow-up, does it make sense to do an environmental scan on other municipalities to see what their job description reads like? And that gives us... I hate reinventing the wheel, if there's a good wheel out there. Maybe it's a big wheel, but it's a good wheel.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I would suspect that whoever the successful consultant is, that that would be one of their sources, is that they would look for other municipalities, look for best practice, look for organizations like Ontario Municipal Administrative Association to support and provide that evidence-based best practice.
Any other questions or comments at this time, councillors? Okay. Oh, sorry, Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair, I think I actually have a couple of questions, I'm just gathering my thoughts. Through the Chair to Clerk Boss or interim director, or interim CAO Clark, roughly how long do we foresee this process potentially taking, given that it is all of council, and that there obviously has to be scheduled meetings? I'm just curious if there's any insight into how that might play out and how we may schedule that.
Through you, Mayor Salanen, and to Councillor Wilkinson. Our notice provision for special council meetings is 24 hours, so within the Clerk's Department, we can offer a one-day turnaround on meetings, essentially.
Through the Chair, I'm certainly not going to put anybody on the spot, but I'm thinking aloud here, in terms of looking at this proposal, I mean, it certainly, I think this is the right avenue to go, in terms of hiring an external firm and vetting candidates and reviewing shortlisted candidates through that method. But I'm also thinking in terms of cost savings, and I guess the concern for me at this point is if we look to move forward with this proposal, are we potentially setting ourselves up to guarantee a payment out, right? And potentially look at being tied into a retainer? Where I'm going with this is that, is there potential for internal applicants that we haven't considered yet? And the reason I bring that up is out of respect for the taxpayer. If there is an avenue to go that route, or potentially even look at the timing of this, I mean, I'm just doing the math in my head, I mean, we're probably, what, 20 months out from a potential election? I don't know. Going through the process, I'm wondering if it's better serve, or service to the taxpayer in respect to them, to say maybe we explore that internal route, or an elongated interim route, prior to committing to this? Because a couple of things occur to me, and that's that, out of respect for potential future makeup of council, you know, are we potentially leaving them in a position that wouldn't be, I don't know, desired if they have a candidate that they didn't have a choice on, right? And I'm playing hypothetically here. So I'm curious if there's an avenue that we should explore potentially internally, prior to committing to putting an RFP out, and maybe that we postpone this for a month or six weeks prior to moving down that path? I don't know. I'm curious if anybody else shares the same thought.
So right now, are you just looking for thoughts, or is that an actual motion to defer? Thoughts? Thoughts? Okay. Councillor Kressman?
Yes, it's my experience in various boards, et cetera, and I don't know, I haven't seen it happen here in Woma, that the CEO changes with the council. I think they usually, hopefully for some degree of continuity over a period of time, that the CAO's position extends for a number of years over several councils. So I can see, you know, I agree that an internal candidate can apply. I guess the real question is, well, I guess I don't buy into the fact that you change as CEO, it's not like a coach or whatever, that when the coach goes, all the assistant coaches go, or vice versa, or whatnot, so.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments? Councillors Sodou?
I'm just, again, just putting my thoughts out there, that with our budget constraints right now, I think there would be some merit to deferring and seeing if there is an internal route that we can explore before going to market. I believe the cost for the RFP would be in the $50,000 to $70,000 range. So with budget going on right now, and not knowing where we're going to be ending up at the end of the month, or potentially further, I do kind of see some merit in exploring all options before we do go the external route.
Any other questions or comments on that right now, councillors? Councillor Kressman?
Well, maybe it's appropriate to, at some point in time, to go into closed and discuss with the current acting CEO, whether he's finding the position onerous, working with his other job of being CFO and treasurer, et cetera.
I think you're right, if you want to start talking about those things, that that would be going into closed. So I'm just kind of thinking, I don't want to be putting anyone on the spot.
No, I understand that.
Maybe the correct path would be looking to defer and then have a closed, potentially, for council to be able to further discuss internally. I'm just thinking on the spot here, but trying, again, don't want to be throwing anybody on the spot about potentially changing the process that we are going into at the moment. So Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair, I think just what I'm hearing aloud is maybe that there is some conversations to be had. I would move that we defer this until the next committee of the whole meeting, and I'm not sure the date on that.
I think the same date?
March 3rd?
Yep. Okay. There's just a lot of inputs going on right now, councillors. Apologies. So what is being suggested, I know councillor, you've just put the motion to defer to next committee of the whole. What is being suggested here is we could also bring it to our 24th meeting if we wanted to have that discussion at that point in time as well. Council can still defer to the next committee of the whole, is an option as well. What Clerk Boss is suggesting, and she even has it written out all night, is that council refers, item 9.1, CAO recruitment back to staff to report back by, insert whatever date we choose, with more information on potential for internal candidates, is the wording that is being proposed here. So Councillor Wilkinson, you're still more than welcome to keep how you've worded, or can choose this wording, I'm just providing options that are being given to me at the moment. To you, Councillor Wilkinson.
Through the Chair, I actually like those changes, I think they're, that sounds a little better. Why don't we set that then for a report back on, well, let's say, March 3rd? Let's keep that.
Okay. So it would be referring, then, this discussion with staff to report back with more information on potential internal candidates by March the 3rd? That is the referral that's on the table. I would need a seconder for that, seconded by Councillors Sodou. So now we're just talking about time and place, as it is a motion to refer. Councillor Kressman?
Yes, through you, Mayor, to Clerk Boss. Just trying to get an impression of why the word "refer" as compared to "defer," et cetera, so just help me out here.
So our procedural bylaw, through you, Mayor Salanen, actually doesn't include defer, it's postpone until a certain time, or to postpone indefinitely. Essentially, defer sets an item on the table until we pick it back up, versus refer sets it to a time and a place, and it gives direction for staff to do something in the meantime. So the motion, as was included to defer, we would have brought the exact same item back with no new information to the March 3rd committee of the whole, whereas with this motion, you provide staff with direction.
Councillor Kressman?
So I would look at an amendment and change the word "defer" to "refer."
And I think that was me choosing semantics, because the clerk does have it written as So that is what's currently on the floor. Any other questions or comments on time or place? Okay, seeing none, I will call, oh, sorry, Councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salanen. Yes, I've been listening to my colleagues, and my concern about referring to a later date is that it doesn't benefit. I realize that we have been working on a very difficult budget, and of course, any budget-saving measures are important, but I think if we wait too long, it could further negatively affect the corporation. So my concern would be delaying it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, councillors? Seeing none, I will call the vote, all those in favor, all those opposed, and that carries. Onto our next report, and that is the Prime Minister's Path Project Terms of Reference. And may I have a mover and a seconder to approve as shown? Moved by Councillor Kressman, seconded by Councillor Martin. And I will invite our acting CAO Director Clark to introduce the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this report is follow-up from direction from council when we started the Prime Minister's Path Project back in September, to bring the terms of reference that the working group develops back to council for approval. And so what's attached here is a draft terms of reference that were completed by the working group a couple of weeks ago at their second meeting. They were shared with internal staff to review and make sure that language was consistent with terms of bringing it to council. And so it's basically as it is, is how it came from them. The one section I do want to highlight for you, because this is really about the work they're going to do, so a lot of it gets into how they're going to do that work, the conversations they're looking to have, the people they're looking to engage with. And I think the critical piece, from a staff perspective, is on page two in the roles and responsibilities, where it addresses the fact that this is a hands-off relationship with the working group, between council and the working group, and that the deliverables of that working group will be submitted by the consultants on behalf of the group to the township council for consideration. So to make it clear that this group is working independently, gathering the information, synthesizing that information, using our consultants as a facilitator, and then bringing that back for consideration by council. So there won't be a direction or recommendation that comes from them. It'll be a number of items presented for council's consideration on how the Prime Minister's Path Project could continue or move forward, and what that might look like. So from staff's perspective, I think this is really good work from the working group. I'm really impressed at how quickly they were able to pull this together as a group of 12, having only met twice. And if there's any questions, Denise from Laura is also here. If there's questions that she may be able to answer better than I do, or I can, because just as council's at arms-length, staff are at arms-length, too. We help with facilitation and coordination, but we don't attend any of the meetings, or really are not privy to the details of the conversations.
Thank you very much, Director. So this has already been moved and seconded. Councillors, if you have any questions, and as Director Clark noted, we do have one of our consultants, Denise, here as well, to answer questions if there are any. Councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salanen. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the process so far. From what I've seen of the consulting group, I think they're doing a great job, from anything I can witness or experience.
Thank you, councillor. And Councillor Kressman?
Yes, through you, Mayor. There's two pieces that caught my attention in reading this over and talking to a couple of the constituents, well, at least one constituent. The facilitators will gather and communicate community feedback to the group, and that's on page, section 6. And so I guess, does that open us up, does that open up to the criticism that the facilitators, I know later in the document, which I liked, that they will as much as possible pass on the raw data to the working group? So I'm just saying, does that open up the possibility for criticism that this is selectively, how should I term this? I don't mean to be obstructive. I think the scientific principle always said you can't manipulate data, and you'd always see scientific reports that you'd question whether the researcher had, in fact, massaged the data to the end goal that he had. And so I guess the question is, how do you ensure that you have transparency to ensure that it is, in fact, the raw data that's being handed off to the working group? I think that's what I'm trying to, so maybe it's appropriate to request that?
Yes, I would look to Denise if you'd like to answer, as you guys are doing that work.
Good? Yeah? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thanks for that question. This is a balance of how much we're asking the working group to do. When we collect the data from the community, we're collecting sort of notes from a T-circle, as you can imagine, there's 30 people in the room, and our staff are taking sort of furious notes as people are chatting. And then we're lifting the themes, and we're lifting specific ideas and those kinds of things out of that data, and then sharing it, the pertinent information with the working group. All of those notes are collected, and they're not destroyed, and so we're happy to share those things. But really, it's that we want to give the working group information that they can digest and digest easily, considering the length of time that we have. But it's not that nobody can see the notes. If you wanted to see the notes, they can be attached as appendices to our report at the end.
Councillor Kressman?
Yes, one further question was, I had heard this concern earlier as well, about the anonymity of the group. And I understand the concern about people...
Councillor Cressman?
Yes, one further question was, I had heard this concern earlier as well, about the anonymity of the group. And I understand the concern about people, I wouldn't say attacking them, but pressuring them, or undue coercive, twisting their arm. How's that? And so, again, does that open us up for criticism about the process later? Or how do we counter that potential criticism of the process?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Again, delicate balance. This is such an interesting, there are so many layers to this, as we all know. We left that decision up to the working group. There are folks on the working group who, coming into this process, were actually afraid of harm, like were actually afraid of violence and harm, and wanted to allow them space to protect their identities if they chose. That's actually not the reason why folks have decided not to disclose their identities just yet. Some of it is the idea of being pressured. There are people who have particular jobs in our community, or they do particular things in our community, that they didn't want those things to overshadow the process in any way at this point in time. I think that where we're at is that folks feel safe enough in the community, and our hope is that we can work towards having those folks share their identities fully, all of them, at the next community gathering. So the big one where they sort of put the recommendations to the community for their feedback. And then that way, they are able to have conversations with the community as the working group. And our hope is that at that point, given that we're almost all the way through the process, people's identities won't affect the process, and the process won't affect their identities.
Thank you very much. I think that would be helpful and would be a sad commentary on our wider community if the process didn't allow them to do their work and do it in safety.
Any other questions or comments, councillors? For Denise? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you again very much, Denise, for joining us. If you have a few comments you want to add, sure.
Thank you so much. The working group had asked me to share back with you a comment we met last week, and I said that I was coming to present it back to you, and so they really wanted me to share just a couple of thoughts from them to you, that they're really proud of the work that they did with this. This was their sort of first win as a group, which was part of the process. They're really proud that these happen. They were all sort of unsure about what it would look like to come up with a co-created terms of reference. They really wanted to thank you all for the space and the time to be able to co-create these terms of reference, and that they're also really proud and really happy that they're all working well, that it's a group of 12 people who are from various sort of diverse opinions and different backgrounds. And I think that they're really happy and really proud that they're respecting each other, and that they're working well, and they sort of see themselves a little bit as, you know, the sort of microcosm of the community. And if it can work in this room, then it could potentially work outside of the room. And that they just, again, wanted to reiterate that the process of creating this terms of reference allowed them to form a foundation together that has been super beneficial to the group process. So, thanks for the time and space.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Oh, councillor Cressman, I think has a follow-up now.
Sorry, I don't want to dominate the questions here. What kind of turnout have you had at these T-circles? You'd have the 12 people, but who are anonymous in the group, but what kind of numbers do you have?
Yeah, we've been super impressed. Both of the past T-circles have been between 30 and 40 people. So the first one was just about 30, and the second one was just about 40 people. And people joining online and in person, lots of people participating. Everybody in the room seems to participate in some way, shape, or form, which has been really lovely. Lots of deep conversation. The first one was a little bit like, what the heck am I doing here? And now people are like in it, they're there. And lots of sort of deep sharing and opportunity to share thoughts and stories and feelings and people's experiences, and to learn from one another, which has been really lovely.
And one more comment, not a question. This is a comment. I really liked the process that you worked through to get a report about how you try to work through and get consensus and et cetera, the different steps, and how that progressed to get final agreement or final disagreement, but at least it was very thoughtful and laid out. And I imagine you've used it and tested this process previously in other engagements.
Absolutely.
So congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much.
Very good. Thank you again, Denise, for joining us tonight. Councillors, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments on this, so I will call the vote. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Onto report 9.3, and this is the recommendation that council approve a variance to the township sign bylaw as it applies to the billboard sign located at 374 Hamilton Road, New Hamburg, to increase the maximum allowable percentage of non-Wilmot-based content from 20% to 50% of total sign face. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover? Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Sedu. And I will invite our manager of planning and economic development, Andrew Martin, to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor Salanen. Very briefly on this, the report is self-explanatory. This deals with the billboard sign, the New Hamburg Tim Hortons drive-through. There's been a lot of vacancies in the sign over the years, and so this just allows flexibility for additional advertising within the current space. But staff can certainly answer questions if there are any.
Thank you very much, Manager Martin. Councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salanen. To Manager Martin, just trying to get that Martin name out there a number of times. I think that the proposal's good, and seeing the vacancies, I think it's a good solution.
Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. 50% seems high to me. I know that, I wanted to say, which is impressive, that between 2,000 and 3,000 people go through that drive-through every day. And trying to make sure that we shop local wherever we can, I would suggest that that 50% be lowered to perhaps 35%. That gives them a 15% increase, and it still leaves the majority of the advertising for our Wilmot companies.
So, is that an amendment then councillor?
Yes.
Okay. So that's been put on the floor. Is that being seconded by councillor Cressman?
Yes, it is. That was exactly what I was thinking as well.
Okay, very good. I'm just going to turn it over to Manager Martin for a comment.
Thank you, Mayor Salanen. So, just to give a little context, the existing sign as it exists right now is at about 37% of non-Wilmot content. It's just there's vacancies on the sign that aren't used for either. So, if we left it at that, it wouldn't change the sign. It would just essentially legalize what's there right now. They have about four too many sign faces to meet the 20%. It's been like that for several years now. We haven't really seen a change. So, as we discussed in the report, one of the reasons we recommended the increase was that there has been opportunity for a number of years now for Wilmot businesses to advertise within those vacant spaces, and it hasn't happened. Certainly, staff have no concerns with status quo. We were just providing an opportunity to the billboard sign to firstly bring their sign into compliance, but also to provide some flexibility, given that they haven't been able to fill the space with Wilmot content. So we have other examples of that. I mean, the billboard at the corner by Stuyman Mennonite Church, although it's only two sign faces, one side is Wilmot, one side is non-Wilmot. We had a process in place there that they approached Wilmot-based businesses of similar content to ensure that they didn't want to advertise there first, and then afterwards they were to advertise that space. We started that process with this sign, but given the number of sign faces, it was a lot of work to go back and forth to confirm that in fact, there's no comparable business that wanted to advertise. And I think if the sign was full, it would be a different scenario, right? But in this instance, it's not. So, staff feels reasonable, but certainly, I mean, council direction is what we're looking for in this case.
I will go to councillor Cressman as you're the seconder, and then councillor Martin after that.
Through you, Mayor, to Manager Martin. Just wondering if we go as recommended to the 50%, and down the road sign, it becomes apparent that people are interested from Wilmot, putting, what's the process to say we can change it back to a lower percentage, or what happens there?
Through Mayor Salanen. So, one provision we had in the Mannheim billboard is we actually have a provision in the approval that provides that opportunity to ensure that there isn't a Wilmot-based business that want to advertise first. So what we could do in the conditions of approval in this instance is put a clause that says if the sign is full at 50 to 50%, and a Wilmot business is interested in advertising, that the first rate of use of the sign going forward would be to fill it with available Wilmot businesses. So we could include language in there that allows for that checkpoint at a state when the sign is full. So we could do that. It comes back annually for renewal, so we could provide a report to council at that point to say the sign is full, and council could include conditions of the renewal at that point to say, you know, no additional non-Wilmot-based content is allowed until that opportunity is provided to those businesses. So, you would have that opportunity annually to put that provision in place, I guess. So we could do one of two things. There could be a condition now, or it could be direction to staff that, on that annual renewal, that we provide that report to council, and that then opportunity would exist to ensure the space is available for Wilmot businesses.
Okay. I will go to councillor Martin, and then councillor Dunstall.
Through you, Mayor Salanen. I would be more willing to consider something that Manager Martin just suggested in terms of changing the language if the sign is full. Having been self-employed for, what, 25 years at least, my business, counseling and mediation people, for many years, I had three offices, and people would drive from Wilmot Township to Kitchener or Stratford so that they would see me elsewhere than in Wilmot Township. There are Wilmot businesses that don't necessarily act in the same way as you might think of other businesses. So, I shop local. When there was a clothing store, I bought pretty well everything I used in Wilmot Township. But I think something like this, if the sign is empty, why not give a way of working at it, and recognizing that if businesses wanted it, they could have used it?
Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. So, Manager Martin, are you telling me that if I want to, if I have a business, and your language would accommodate that my business could move a non-Wilmot business off the board if I so choose to? Is that what you're saying?
Through Mayor Salanen, not quite. What I would probably suggest would be that if the sign is full at 50, 50, and we're made aware of, and we can have that conversation with the billboard company, that there is a Wilmot-based business interested in advertising, and there's not a space available, that at such time as they, another business leaves the sign, that that space be made available for Wilmot-based content. So there would be, and it would come up through that annual renewal. So what we can do is, we can have a conversation with the billboard company at the renewal stage to ask, you know, what inquiries they've received, to find out where it's at. I'm not sure we're going to get to the point where it's of a concern, because it has been vacant. It's not that, they haven't, they've gone above the 20% already. So I don't know that it will be full if they're allowed to go. It just allows for some flexibility. So the answer to your question is, no, I don't think it would bump a business, but the annual renewal process would allow that opportunity to provide direction to the billboard company that they can't replace the non-Wilmot-based business with another non-Wilmot-based business.
Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you. A follow-up to that. How about we look at 45%? You're already 37. How about we go to 45? I just have a real issue with our Wilmot businesses not having more exposure. I understand what you're saying, that, you know, there's some blank spots, but we do have new businesses opening up, thank goodness, and so I would like them to have an opportunity to do that. So I don't know if there's an appetite for just moving that to, let's say, 45%, which gives them a little bit more wiggle room, but still gives Wilmot that little bit of an edge.
So I would look to councillor Cressman as the seconder, if you're okay with the wording moving to 45%. Otherwise, councillor Dunstall would just need to, well, otherwise, I guess, we would need to dispense of the amendment on the floor, and then councillor Dunstall could reintroduce something, depending on how that goes.
I must admit, I'm partial to the one that, the provision that Manager Martin talked about of looking at on an annual renewal, similar to, I believe the Mannheim sign is that way as well. And I think that that makes sense, I think. Do we receive some reimbursement on this at all, or not? Or is it strictly the sign company that makes the money on these ads?
Through Mayor Salanen, there is an annual license fee, but it's not a, we don't get a percentage of advertising fees, no. It's the base renewal rate.
So, with that, I'm going to say, I think we've discussed a lot about the motion that's on the floor as it stands, which is 35% would be the amendment. I would ask that we vote on that. It has already been moved and seconded, so if you're not in support of it, you just vote against it. So, to dispense of that, and then we will see where that takes us and go from there, back into discussions to see if it is the motion as amended. So, all those in favor of the amendment? And all those opposed? And that is defeated. Councillor Wilkinson? So now we're just back to the main motion as presented.
Thank you. Through the chair. So, through the chair to Manager Martin, you've mentioned here that this sign agreement through the township in terms of licensing comes up on an annual basis for renewal. And you're suggesting at that time, obviously, we would be made aware, we can include provisions to make them aware, or make us aware, if there's a demand from Wilmot businesses. I guess my question is, could we go a step further and potentially put a provision in there to suggest that non-Wilmot businesses are on an annual renewal basis, so that they're not entering into an agreement with this company for potentially three to five years' worth of advertising? Is that something within the bounds of what we can impose?
Through Mayor Salanen, I would be cautious to put that wording in, because I don't know what the terms of the contract the billboard company has with individuals. There's a number of signs that have been on there for a number of years, and I don't know whether they sign a multi-year contract or not. So, I wouldn't be comfortable with that wording without having had that conversation with them, but I think we can include, we can include language in there of like encouragement to suggest that that's the process, but to actually dictate it could be problematic, depending on what contracts might already be in place with advertisers.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair. I'm thinking aloud here. Given that we are a committee of the whole, perhaps we could look into what that could potentially be, and then have it reported back at council. But even if we were to, say, not want to step on the toes or nullify any existing agreements, we could suggest that non-Wilmot businesses coming in, we could suggest to the sign proprietor that the non-Wilmot business has to be tied to the renewal date, and at that time, potentially be taken down or put back up, I guess, depending on demand from Wilmot businesses. Is that somewhat agreeable? Can we look into that from a legal perspective?
Yeah, through Mayor Salanen. We can certainly have that conversation with the billboard company to find out what their rental terms are, and see if we can come up with language that would work from their perspective, but achieve what goals you're trying to speak to, and we can come back with that, for sure.
So, our clerk is suggesting that we put that in as an amendment, if that is the direction that council wants to go, just so that when the report comes back, it's clear what we're directing staff for council.
So, through the chair, I'd be looking to the clerk for wording, because she's very good at it. But I think just in summary, what I'm getting at here is that we will, in essence, support the idea that we could allow more advertising. However, in the spirit of wanting to keep it open to Wilmot first at the renewal date, any new additions to the sign would be up for renewal pending, obviously, the demand from Wilmot. I think the spirit there is we allow the sign to obviously fill their empty spots, but ensuring that annually, we're looking at whether or not there's demand from Wilmot businesses. And hopefully, you know, if they're watching, they sign up tomorrow to put some advertising up.
Very good. I'm just going to give our clerk a few moments to culminate wording on that. At this point, are there any other comments on this discussion, or questions at all, councillors? I don't know that we're going to break into a musical theater production, councillor Cressman, but appreciate the creativity. We will just give the clerk a moment here.
Thank you, Mayor Salanen. So the motion is that council amend-
Kressman, but appreciate the creativity. We will just give the clerk a moment here.
Thank you, Mayor Salan. So the motion is that council amends the motion to add, and that council directs staff to report back at the next council meeting with more information on prioritizing Wilmot businesses, and if non-Wilmot businesses can be reviewed during the annual review process.
Does that capture what you're looking for, Counselor?
Through the chair, I guess the only other provision in piece I'm looking at is that we want to ensure that we're not overstepping existing agreements, so that we're looking to put in place or get information returned back to suggest that any new additions would be tied to new terms. I don't know if that's clear. Clear, okay.
Okay. We're getting from Director Martin that that's clear in the direction that he's looking for. With that, I don't believe that there's any other final comments or questions. Yes, so seconded by Counselor Kressman. Thank you for reminding. I got really distracted with the song there, you know. So all those in favor then, and that carries unanimously. And then we will now vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Onto report nine point four. The recommendation is that staff be directed to report back with a policy and draft agreement terms related to decorative crosswalk installations in the township of Wilmot. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Sudu, seconded by Counselor Dunstall, and I will invite our Director of Infrastructure Services, Jeff Mullenhus, to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is a follow-up from council direction in Q4 of 2024, directing staff to look into the feasibility of a decorative crosswalk on Huron Street in New Hamburg. This report outlines general installation details, as well as administrative elements that are best practice, including policy development, engagement activities, and establishing maintenance relationships to support decorative crosswalks in general. The motion was in context to a decorative crosswalk for a veterans crosswalk, in hopes for a fall 2025 installation on Huron Street in New Hamburg. Staff have discussed with the region, and at this time, they've been advised that the region does not currently have a policy that would allow for such an installation. However, they did seem to be open to reviewing this position over the course of this year. So as a result, this report recommends that we continue on with our process of policy development and legal framework, as well as working with the Legion on potential alternate locations, and then reporting back to council at a later date. And I will note that staff did meet with members of the Legion and had this preemptive conversation about the potential for the region not allowing such activities. And so we did talk about the potential for alternate locations, and I think this is a good time for us to use the time to develop policy and get a framework in place, and then look at some of those potential alternatives. The reason why we are looking at this in context, not necessarily to just a veterans crosswalk, is because we could have other decorative types that come forward, and so we do want to be consistent with the policy and a process for those, so that they are treated the same if they are brought forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director, and thank you for the work that you and your staff have put in on this. Counselor Dunstall, you have a question or comment?
I do. Thank you. Through you, Mayor. It is more of a comment, and I did read the report, and I strongly disagree with the region's decision to reject the veterans crosswalk while simultaneously acknowledging its growing support nationwide. Instead of recognizing it as the tribute that it is, they are bundling it into a broader study of various community groups. This isn't about one group. It's about all Canadian veterans, including Indigenous and LGBTQ service members who sacrificed for our country. And with all due respect, honoring their service should not be up for debate. The Legion was covering the cost, and approval should have been automatic. These young Canadians gave their lives for our country. Given the current situation with our neighbor to the South, it's even more important now that we honor our troops by standing as proud Canadians and protecting the sovereignty that they fought so hard for. And I have to tell you that over the last twelve months, it's become very clear to me that as a second-tier municipality, our voices are rarely heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and I certainly appreciate your passion. And I know, from a regional context, it's currently been at a staff level, that decision, but not in relation to crosswalks. But I know bus wraps, there's going to be stuff coming forward in terms of recognizing our veterans. So just wanted to make note of that. But I will just leave those at comments, as staff plan to report back on other possible alternatives as well. Are there any other comments or questions on the item before us? Counselor Kressman?
Yes. I guess in reading this and understanding that it was going to be studied, oh, through you, Mayor, studied by the region, I would like to ensure that there's some type of timeframe that this study by the region is completed, and we have some type of answer so that we can initiate a response. I understand concurrently, we can do the policy development. I agree with that. I still am, I think, the uniqueness of what the service of our veterans and what they provided for this country, and the responders, the people in police service, et cetera, I think we have to honor the commitment and the sacrifice, and those who have lost their lives in the way of service, either historically or continued service to our country, and in some way recognize that, because I think they're putting their lives on the line daily for us. So I realize it's veterans and et cetera that we're talking here, but I think we would like, I would like to see some type of pressure, here, I go back to my wording earlier, some type of deadline that's attached with it for the regional study. I know we can't do that, but I think as our regional representative, I would like to see you bring it to the floor at the region in terms of a motion, if you don't see any action in a short, in what we would judge as appropriate time.
Would you like to make that an amendment? I'm happy if council wants to direct me to bring a motion forward on it, or if you want to bring it up at a later time, but I'm happy to see an amendment like that.
Yeah, I think I'll let, I think I'll let them go through the process, but if we see that this isn't being concluded in appropriate time, then I think I would be prepared to bring it. I'm sure Counselor Dunstall would as well see this brought forward, and that's the time to bring it. I'll, in good faith, take this as action that the region's going to move forward on, and until proven otherwise, then that's when the motion will come.
Very good. And I believe Director Mullenhus may have some answers on timelines.
Through you, Mayor. So in terms of timelines, I would suggest that, you know, we were hoping to report back within Q2, Q3 of this year. And what we were looking for was to gain some more information and look at a policy and look at sort of agreement terms, if you will, if it were within, fully within our jurisdiction, you know, if we were looking at these types of installations on our roads. So we were looking at Q2, Q3 of this year for reporting back. I think that's a reasonable time for us to try to work at the staff level to get some momentum on it. I can't suggest that we can control or influence the region's work plan if it's not priority of staff, so it certainly would be something that we would take support from the mayor and from council here to proceed with that. But I would say that the region is in a difficult situation in general when it comes to their road network as it relates to, there's a number of jurisdictions, lower tiers, that their roads obviously are within, and so they do need to be consistent with their policies as well. And so I can understand their position, where they want to essentially have the same approach that we do in terms of consistency and approach. And so I think that's what I would say to council, is that we would appreciate the support, so we can continue working with this at the staff level, and we'll still plan to report back Q2 or Q3 of this year, and so in hopes that that might also be in time for an installation, whether that be on a regional road, or whether that be another location that the Legion would be in supportive.
Thank you very much, Director. I'm going to go to Counselor Dunstall.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. That was my question, was if we were going to be able to do it for 2025. And I know that the region is looking for a policy for everyone. However, I do have to say, and I'll say it again, that I do believe the veterans are different than other groups, but that's my opinion. I think it's shared by a lot of Canadians. And Mayor, I appreciate you taking this fight forward, and I look forward to seeing what you do to perhaps change some decisions. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, to Director Mullenhus, I think I appreciate where you're coming from in spirit and wanting to at least get the work done and have a framework from a Wilmot perspective. I don't know if it needs to be formalized direction, but perhaps I would assume that part of the conversations with the Legion and your own research and reporting back is that there will be some potential alternative suggestions in terms of areas where this crosswalk could potentially be installed. I know it gets sticky when you're dealing with regional roads and right-of-way, but, you know, for instance, I guess something to maybe consider out is, you know, where does Peel Street end for the region and start for Wilmot, right? Or how far into Union or whatever we need to get. So does that need to be formalized direction, or is that sort of part of your process?
Through you, Mayor. I don't think we need formalized direction. I think that will be our intent, is to work towards a suitable location. And if the region right-of-way is not an option, then we would do our best to work with the Legion on something within our own jurisdiction that we can approve. But that is also something that further dialogue would be needed with members of the Legion, and, you know, look at locations that would be appropriate, and that they would desire for such an installation as well.
Any other questions or comments on this item, counselors? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote then. All those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Onto announcements for this evening. I did want to note that as the start of February, it is Black History Month in Canada, and this year's theme is Black Legacy and Leadership: Celebrating Canadian History and Uplifting Future Generations. There are lots of activities throughout the region that are going on, and I would encourage you to certainly look those up and participate where you can. And although I wasn't there yesterday, I did hear that at the Ken Seeling Museum, there was a great kickoff to Black History Month in the region. So thank you to everyone who was involved in that. The other thing I did want to make note of, as we have looming tariffs, although I believe as I was walking here, it sounds like ours have also been pushed back thirty days, I did just want to take the opportunity to emphasize buying local and buying Canadian where you can in our communities. And I know that everyone does strive to do that already, but just wanted to give out a reminder and just let our local businesses as well know that if you have questions, although as a municipality, we can't directly make impacts on what imposing tariffs there may be, we're more than happy to help direct you to potential supports that our upper levels of government are involved in. And I will turn it over to Counselor Kressman, because I think he wants to do the heritage announcement.
Yes. By next meeting, it'll be over, but I want to remind people on the Family Day weekend, on the Saturday, at the New Dundee Community Centre, from ten till two, ten in the morning till two in the afternoon, is our Heritage Day, the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the township. And it's celebrating families of Wilmot, past and present. So it's an opportunity to come out and see some displays. There'll be food provided, I think soup, and maybe some bread of different sorts, as I understand it, from the New Dundee Women's Institute for purchase. So invite people to attend.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other announcements? Counselor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salan. I'm hoping you'll allow a thank you instead of an announcement. There was a wonderful snow-removing crew on the weekend in New Hamburg. The banks were getting high. It was hard to get from the road into the businesses. And I know Director Catania had some involvement. I'm not sure how many departments. I saw some Wilmot trucks, but I know the region did their work as well in terms of the regional plowing. And Director Mullenhus, you were involved. And so it was Director Catania that I spoke with, but thank you, Director Mullenhus, for your role. And so I just wanted to thank everyone, because that was wonderful to see that work.
And I've got to do my lane.
Any other announcements, counselors? Okay, seeing none. We don't have any bylaws, because it's committee of the whole, so I would be looking for a mover and a seconder to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Kressman, seconded by Counselor Martin. All those in favor. That carries unanimously. Have a great evening, everyone.